I know. I'm gonna wait to get, uh, no, he's an Australian. He's probably tuned in.
Oh, yeah, right.
Good morning, everyone. Nope.
Whoa.
Oh, wow.
That hurt.
Good morning, everyone. Please help yourself to the coffee and the donuts in the back of the room. Um, I'd like to welcome you all who are here in person to our workshop today and anyone who is listening or watching virtually. Um, and I'd like to just call the meeting to order and with, uh, with the exception of Mr. Edmundston, who is excused today, all members of the town council are here. Uh, Cliff Gravier, our town manager, Molly Daisy, our, uh, town clerk, and Will Wharton, who we've buried in the background so nobody could see him over there, who's our IT director, is here. Uh, before we start, and I know this is a, probably a stupid question, but how many of you were here for the second item on the agenda, the Collins, uh, Kent Wellington? And how many of you are here for the comprehensive plan? Okay. Well, it seems that, given the number of people we have, I'm sorry, the people who are here for the Collins Street seem to outweigh or outnumber the folks who are here for the boring comprehensive plan. So I would like to ask council if anyone would make a motion that we, um, reverse the items on the agenda?
I'd like to make a motion that, um, we, um, place, uh, on the agenda the first item, discussion regarding pro- uh, proposed Collins, Kent, Wellington Parkway project.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. Um, before I ask Mr. Gravier to begin his presentation, I just wanted to remind everyone of why we're here today. Um, today is a workshop at which Mr. Gravier will introduce the latest proposal for the pedestrian pathway from Collins to Kent to Wellington and down to Route One. So it's basically, it's an introductory, um, meeting, an introductory workshop to give everyone an idea of what it's about. It's not a workshop at which we're going to take comment. Um, that's gonna be reserved for the January thirteenth meeting. Um, January thirteenth is the beginning of the three-day Martin Luther King holiday, and there'll be two hearings, two, uh, special meetings that day. One at three o'clock for Kent and Wellington, and the other at five for Collins. So, um, this is to introduce the concept and to give you time to think about it, and then to come on January thirteenth with your comments and everything. Today, you're perfectly welcome to ask questions. Um, following, uh, Mr. Gravier's presentation, council will have the opportunity to ask any clarifying questions, and then any of those here present will also have that opportunity. And when you do come, uh, when you have a question, I'd ask you to come to the microphone and identify yourself and your address, uh, so that we have it for the record, and also so that the people who are watching virtually know who is speaking and they can hear you. Okay? Thank you very much. And with that, I'll ask Mr. Gravier to begin.
Mayor, council. Throughout the years during my tenure here, the, the most, uh, one of the most, topical things in every campaign cycle is concern about pedestrian and cyclist safety. And, uh, for my time here before, town manager, as police chief, certainly, again, we heard much, much concern about pedestrian cyclist safety, and certainly in the summer. Because of that concern, in two thousand and five, the town, working with the Delaware Department of Transportation, commissioned a traffic study, a very comprehensive study that cost the Delaware Department of Transportation a quarter of a million dollars to, to really take a thorough deep dive into the pedestrian safety needs of the community. Uh, cyclist safety offered a number of different alternatives. Uh, one of those alternatives, uh, that was, uh, I won't say at the top of the list, but it was very close, was the consideration of doing something more, uh, to enhance pedestrian safety in what I'll call the, uh, Collins Street corridor. The Collins Street corridor serves about eight hundred homes, a little over seven hundred and seventy, seven hundred and eighty homes that can access, uh, Collins and use Collins as a, as a thoroughfare to get to the east side of the community. Over the years, uh, we toyed with the idea, looked at the idea, and didn't have a lot of, uh, lot of interest at that point in time regarding the Collins corridor, mainly because of financial issues. Later, about twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, uh, there was renewed interest, again, especially as, uh, the number of pedestrians in town grew. The, the town just seems busier and busier. And the town commissioned a traffic study with the Kircher Group. And the Kircher Group was a, a company that provides traffic services and, and traffic analysis throughout the United States. And they did another very comprehensive study. And one of their recommendations, again, was an enhancement of the corridor, the Collins corridor. With that in mind, the town, working with the Kircher Group, developed a plan to widen Collins by five feet. And that widening was going to occur on the south side of Collins. Uh, plans were developed, uh, was costed out, was brought to the council after, uh, multiple public workshops, and the council voted unanimously to approve the wide, widening of Collins by five foot for a pedestrian pathway on the south side of Collins. Um, almost immediately after that, uh, COVID hit us, and the town's access to its engineers was limited. And we took a step back from that project. Uh, it was scheduled to go forward within a short time after the approval. But because Del Dot had, had backed off with some of the things that it was doing, and Kircher had also taken a step back, we had an opportunity, on a limited basis, to work with engineers that did make themselves available from both Kircher and Del Dot. And we found, for the first time, uh, approval from Del Dot to work with us to enhance the Collins corridor so we could make it a safer corridor all the way from Half Moon Drive to Delaware Route One. One of the criticisms during the twenty nineteen, uh, public hearings of our initiative for the five-foot pathway was that it was a five-foot pathway to nowhere. Uh, that we were taking people down Collins, we would put them on Kent, and then there would be no safe passage on Kent for them to get to Wellington, and no safe passage from Wellington to Delaware Route One. Uh, surprisingly, in a, in a break from past practices with Del Dot, Del Dot worked with us in this interim period to allow us to put a ten-foot pathway, uh, on, on, uh, on Kent to Wellington, and then also allow us to put a pedestrian flashing beacon at the intersection of, uh, of Kent and Wellington. When that was done, we took a look back at what we had recommended, uh, initially with the five feet on, uh, on Collins. And we talked to our engineers about how we could widen that pathway to make it more usable, uh, more user-friendly and safer. One of the, uh, the reports, and off the top of my head, I really don't remember it, JMT or, um, or Kircher, had recommended a five-foot pathway with a three-foot buffer. But, uh, in looking at it and talking about it, again, with Kircher, we thought we would create a more usable, possibly create a more usable path and a safer path by widening the path to eight foot, uh, not installing the buffer to make the path more attractive to people walking or biking, uh, maybe in both directions. Ideally, the path would be at least ten foot wide. Uh, but if we were to widen the path ten feet and try to equitably move from both five on one side and five to the other to make the path five feet, we would probably almost double the cost of the path by having to move utility poles and transformer boxes. The path would take on a whole different perspective, and the alternative, again, to the poles would be undergrounding, which, again, would be a very expensive proposition. So with that in mind, we asked the engineers what the optimum amount we could get out without having to be involved with the moving of poles. And the engineers told us, uh, three feet. And subsequently, the, the plan was adjusted, and the whole roadway is shifted three feet to the north. So coming from the north, there'll be a ten-foot lane, another ten-foot lane, and then an eight-foot wide pedestrian pathway on the south side of the roadway. Uh, that is the plan. Uh, right now, I can tell you, uh, that we know that the projected cost for the, uh, pathway is eight hundred and six thousand dollars. That entire amount is covered by grant funds that we've been fortunate enough to be able to pick up. If the path is approved, that's what we'll use for that. And that if the path goes forward during construction, the roadway will be open. All driveways will be open during construction. Access will never be limited to homes. Mail will still be delivered. And at the end of the project, any work that's been done, uh, moving mailboxes, moving trash boxes, and we'll also give citizens the option to, to get a, a moving container, if they prefer that, to the trash box in front of their home as an alternative to that. Driveways will be restored, mailboxes restored, boxes restored, and the fronts of property will be restored. And I can tell you that we worked diligently to do the same thing on South Atlantic Avenue. I don't think we had, uh, one homeowner who, at the end of the day, was disgruntled. Uh, we went back to visit homeowners multiple times if they weren't happy with the restoration of their property, and the same thing would occur here. All of this is within the public right-of-way. I would note that, uh, one of the reasons municipalities are incorporated by the state, and one of the things the state oversees very, very carefully is that the public right-of-way is maintained for the safe transit or movement of the population within a community. And that's what it's dedicated for. If you remember Maryland Avenue, when we abandoned Maryland Avenue, there's a whole legislative process that the state oversees to make sure that public right-of-ways are maintained for the public's benefit. And mayor, that's all I have right now.
Thank you, Mr. Gravier. Does anyone on council have any questions? Okay. Does anyone who is here present have any questions? Please come to the microphone.
Good morning. I'm Bill Bergfeld. I live four fourteen Gibson Avenue. Um, I just have a question about Del Dot because it really, really irks me that I drive through Lu- uh, drive through Dewey every day, and I go through seven stop signs or stoplights, and there are six crosswalks, and there's twenty-five mile speeds in, zone. And, and, and now I know of this plan. We've got Kent Avenue that's twenty-five, I understand that. But they refuse to put a stoplight, or we don't talk about it to them. I don't know what the reason is why we can't have a stoplight to stop traffic on both Route One and Kent Avenue at a pedestrian pathway that we're creating to save people's lives. Um, so I don't know what the situation is with Del Dot and why they wouldn't consider that.
Well, we have, um, just recently, and, and you were one of the drivers, asked Del Dot again uh, to consider a stoplight, uh, at one at your street. And, uh, Del Dot has, has said no. Um, Del Dot said no to a stoplight at Kent and Wellington, but did, and we were surprised, say, okay to the pedestrian beacon. Would we rather have a stoplight? Certainly. Um, what the issue is in Dewey, I, I make that ride every day, and, and I don't understand it either. The, uh, the rope, little rope causeway costs taxpayers four hundred thousand dollars. And, and I contend that there's probably Olympic contest when bars close to see who, who can go over that rope the, the most quickly. I, I don't know, I don't know what the issue is. I don't know what drives Dewey's success in, in doing those things, but they are successful with it.
Hi. Uh, my name's Dan Maloney. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm at, uh, we live at six oh one Collins Street. Uh, we built the house there forty-two years ago, so we've been around for a while. Uh, one simple question, when is this projected to begin?
In, in, uh, in my dream world, I'd like to be able to do that, uh, this spring. Um, reality might mean that, uh, we look at the fall. If the project can move forward quickly, if the engineers can quickly develop some, uh, bid documents and we get to bid and get a return, it would be something we would look at in late spring. If not, it would be early fall.
Yeah, probably fall to avoid the summer crush would be better.
But we would not do it in the dead of summer, but I think if we were able to do it in May, we might consider that.
Most, most construction projects do drag on a little bit long, so you'd want to avoid that.
But the street will stay open, so regardless.
Yes, good, good. Uh, have you considered water drainage at all in this process?
It's been a, it's a, it's, it's an integral part of everything that's been done. Uh, drainage and runoff is, is a major part of, uh, the project. Kircher is an engineering company we have used to redo many of our drainage systems within the town, and they're acutely aware of, of how drainage works and what our needs are. That's been a part of the project.
Okay, 'cause in front of our house, several times where there's a buried water drainage pipe, the, the level of the soil has sunk, and there has to be adjusted back up. The pipe underneath, I don't know if it's collapsing or what's going on. But obviously, if you extend the, the pathway three feet to the north, you'll be coming pretty close to covering that over, which is gonna increase the price of, of, of any maintenance on there. So you make sure that they have considered that strongly because one thing we don't want to do is, uh, have, have worse water drainage. Uh, walking up Collins Street, if you look on the north side, if you extend it three feet to the north, uh, you're gonna come really close to some of the new cable, TV cable and internet installations. And, as you mentioned, the power poles. You won't hit the power poles, but you'll be about a foot and a half to two feet away from them. And by widening the road, the traffic is gonna increase. So you may end up having higher liability and having cars speeding down the widened Collins running into those utility poles.
The traffic lanes are, the traffic lanes are staying ten feet as they are today. And the only thing that's widening would be the pathway in the south side of the road. And the, the circumstance you describe is, uh, we see throughout the town with utility boxes and poles that close to the roadway. Uh, ideally, we'd move them or, or be able to remove them, but it would make the, uh, project cost prohibitive.
Yeah, uh, maybe flashing lights or something or another on those poles? I don't, I'm not sure. Speed bumps are, are, I think have been very successfully used in Bethany, and I'd encourage you to, uh, increase the number of speed bumps on all of this route. Uh, I know, I've talked to several people that have been impacted by the speed bumps in the past, and they really do slow down traffic. It's probably the most cost-effective way of ensuring safety for everybody. So I'd encourage you to consider that all along the route, add more speed bumps.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, Jim Weber, four zero seven Collins Street. Um, my main concern is, you're, in the summertime, believe it or not, the pedestrians and the people on bicycles serve as a human speed bump for traffic, um, especially with vacationers. It slows them down. Um, you take those pedestrians off the street, which I'm in favor of, along with the, the cyclist. Uh, to me, it's gonna open up Collins for the vehicles to move more faster. And, you know, right now, we have what I consider fake speed bumps. They don't do any good at all. People just fly over them. I don't see any speed bumps on the design. I agree with the gentleman that just spoke. We need multiple speed bumps, you know, probably in the neighborhood of four or five to slow the traffic down considerably. Because right now, even, you know, in the off-season, people just fly down Collins and with no regard for the speed bump. And, you know, there, we do have young kids on that street. You know, every, all the young kids, my grandkids, they've been trained, uh, during their younger years to stay off Collins because, you know, people come flying around Kent, uh, you know, and head, head west on Collins. And, you know, they see how fast they can go to get to the first speed bump. I think you need a speed bump almost immediately, um, on Collins coming off of Kent, to, you know, to give people the eye, let them know that, you know, they need to slow down. The other thing, you know, I would like you to consider is possibly making Collins one-way, uh, heading west from Kent to Half Moon. That way, you wouldn't have to touch anybody's property. You would have the walkway and, uh, you know, on one side of the street, and just make it one-way from, uh, Kent heading west to Half Moon. You would keep the traffic down to a minimum. You would force anybody heading east out to twenty-six, you know, which is where they should be. And it would eliminate a lot of traffic on Collins. So.
Thank you. I wanted to go back and just, uh, mention something that Mr. Bergfeld brought up. I don't know if you recall back in the spring when we met with Del Dot?
Yes.
Um, we talked about, we asked them about, uh, the twenty-five miles an hour through Dewey. And on residential streets, they do allow twenty-five miles an hour. And I remembered the gentleman from Del Dot saying that they consider that part of Dewey Beach to be residential. So that was, that was their excuse.
Mayor, one comment is, uh, there are speed bumps shown on those drawings, if you take a look, along Collins. Two.
Good morning. I'm Janie Switzer, three eighteen Wellington. Um, if you're going to be taking five feet of the easement on Wellington, will that change the status of a parking pass needed to park on the third block of Wellington?
It's, uh, not five foot of the easement, it's five foot of the right-of-way.
Okay.
But no, it, it wouldn't change that. Uh, it might be more difficult to park legally.
So there would be five feet left to fit a car on the public right-of-way?
If, if you look at the drawings on Wellington, there's a significant portion of right-of-way left after the pathway. Collins, unlike the major, most, the longest portion of Wellington, unlike the largest portion of Collins is fifty feet wide, as opposed to forty feet wide. So the street is substantially larger, and there's a, a substantial amount of right-of-way left. Is it five feet exactly? I don't know.
So if you build a house and you need a parking space for each bedroom, um, the space requirement is eight by eighteen?
The parking space would be on your property and not in the right-of-way.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
I got it.
All right.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, I have another comment. I agree that Collins could be one-way. And, um, I think that would save a lot of money. And you could even make it one-way in the morning and the opposite way in the afternoon. Uh, you'd have to police that. You'd have to put up a sign that said, "From eight to eleven, the street is this way." And from three to five, the street would be this way. And, uh, that's just a, another thought, but.
One, one-way streets were discussed with both engineering firms, and both recommend against it for the other problems it would cause with traffic flow within the Bethany West community. Uh, and again, those seven hundred and eighty homes, uh, pull out or come out to Half Moon, and we would be creating a lot of problem and a lot more traffic on some of the other side streets, which would create its own problems. The idea both recommended was a solution exists within Collins itself to widen the street within the public right-of-way to assure safe pedestrian travel.
Okay, um, we have this beautiful wide Route twenty-six with sidewalks. And I just wish there was a way to guide, encourage, uh, people to, um, use those versus putting people on Kent, um, and having them then ha- walk up Collins. You stay on Kent, and then you have to cross, um, Kent to get to Wellington. And it just seems like it's just such a, a problem when we have these beautiful sidewalks right here that you could guide people toward. And I know you have suggested that, um, you can't make people go where they don't want to go. But, um, with, if there was a sidewalk on Kent between Collins and twenty-six, you might have people with wagons and strollers and kids on bicycles. You might have them encouraged to head from Kent to twenty-six instead of from Collins onto Kent onto Wellington.
Well, our hope has always been that people that want to come in town on twenty-six make the trip to twenty-six. I, I think we all know the human condition, no matter what we want to do, is to always look for the shortest route, and the shortest route is Collins. And I don't know how we could just encourage with signage or arrows people to take the longer route to get somewhere they want to go.
Yeah, I get it. I get it. It's just a shame because we have this sidewalk, and if we added a sidewalk, I think you might get some to, um, unconsciously turn this way instead of turning that way. But, and I, I also kind of feel like Collins has created a problem for Wellington where I think Wellington doesn't have a problem. And I live on the third block of Wellington. But, um, just one other thing, when you put a walkway on one side of the street, at some point, you are telling somebody to walk on the wrong side of the street.
Well, actually, state law says if there is no sidewalk and you walk in the street, you have to walk facing traffic. But if a sidewalk is available, then you're to walk on the sidewalk regardless of which way you're walking.
And you consider a path, this pathway, to be a sidewalk?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay.
By, by definition of, by both the state's definition and the Federal Highway Administration's definition, yes.
It's, you know, it's just where, I think where we've all learned to, if you're a, if you're a bicycle or a vehicle, you go this way. If you're walking, you go against traffic. So I always cringe when I see people walking with their kids, their wagons, their strollers and everything, on the wrong side, regardless of whether there's a path. Because it only takes two people walking side by side, and they're not gonna be inside that five-foot path. So, um, I know it's a dilemma, but those are my comments.
Thank you. Um, we'll give this woman a turn to speak.
You're fine, you're fine.
You're fine.
My name is Kate McNamie. I live at four three three Collins, at the stop sign across from the water tower. Two things, where you did it on Atlantic, you have cars parked, so there's a buffer. When you're walking down those pathways, you're not gonna veer off into the street. So that works. Having lived on Collins for twenty years, the reason people don't like to go on twen- on the twenty-six is they like to walk eight abreast. And they can't do that on the sidewalk. I don't really think that putting a line down and saying, "This is the sidewalk," is gonna ke- keep people on that sidewalk. 'Cause I've seen it. I mean, they just don't move. And then you've got people coming this way and that way. Someone's gotta step off. It's too much of a, so it sounds good in theory, but I just know people. It's too much of a, so it sounds good in theory, but I just know people from 20 years of watching the traffic, the foot traffic, I don't think they're going to stay on that sidewalk. And that scares me because it's too much going on. But anyway, think about it.
Just a quick suggestion about the speed bumps. If you use the 200 block of Oakwood as a template, you've got two speed bumps on that one block. Okay? And you're talking about putting two speed bumps on Collins, that's probably two to three times longer than that same section. So that's why I'm suggesting, you know, four, at least four speed bumps. Because two is not going to slow people down, especially in the summertime. If you have young drivers that just fly, they want to get to the beach, get a parking place, it's not going to slow them down, so.
I, I would note that we have literally taken hundreds of hours of speed data off of Collins. And very few people break the speed limit. I think the average speed on Collins is about 19 or 20 miles an hour. And the fact is that 25 miles an hour is much too fast a speed for all of our residential streets. But that's as low as we can legally set it. So, I mean, we've been out there a lot. We, we know that, again, 19 to 21 is about the average and few people ever hit 25 miles per hour. The perception, when you're that close to the street or when you're walking on the street or your home is that close, that cars going 25 miles an hour are really flying. And they are, because that's not a safe speed for the street. But they are going the speed limit, so.
Well, I don't know how you collected your data, but, you know, I've sat on my front porch for 10 years and, you know, people just fly, they don't even observe the speed bumps, they just fly over them. And, you know, you need to have, you know, real speed bumps, not fake ones like we have now. You know, something that's going to slow a vehicle down and make them aware of the fact that they need to slow down. And, you know, I think two speed bumps just isn't going to, you know, you might as well just not put any on there.
I, I've noted this and if the project moves forward, we'll ask our engineers what their advice is, so.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Anyone else?
I live at 689 Fenwood Court in Bethany. Come out of our little cul-de-sac and get onto Collins and go down the street, there's the Half Moon Drive across over and going to Collins. I, I don't know how wide the streets are before you get to the other side of Half Moon Drive.
They're 50 feet wide.
Pardon me?
They're 50 feet wide.
50 feet wide, on both sides of?
On both sides until you get to the home just before the water plant, on the west side of the water plant. They're 50 feet. Right at that home, the first last home before the water plant, on the west side of the water plant, it drops to 40.
There's 50 feet of blacktop.
There's 50 feet of right of way.
I'm, I'm told by blacktop, sorry.
Black, blacktop, there's only 20 feet.
On both sides?
10, 10-foot lanes, 10-foot traffic lanes, a total of 20 feet of blacktop.
On the east side?
On, all the way down, all the way through Bethany West.
I'm, I'm sorry. Say that again now?
There's two 10-foot lanes, 10, two 10-foot blacktop traffic lanes from Kent all the way to 26 on Collins.
Right. Okay. But on the other side, when you get, when you come west and cross over Half Moon to get to Collins Street, how wide is the street there?
Your traffic lane is the same size.
Okay. All right. There's one thing I took quite, can't quite figure out on this is imagination and reality are two different things here. Do you, people realize the serious consequences that could occur by doing what you're going to do, but it could possibly make things worse than they are now? I don't know that you, I mean, you're going to have a whole lot more people going to access Collins Street and there are going to be lots more traffic, people walking, pushing baby carriages, riding bikes, scooters, cars and so forth. You're going to encourage that?
I, I don't think there's a thought that there'll be more people, but the people that do travel the roadway will have a, a safe alternative to walking in the roadway.
Wait a minute. Are you trying to get people to walk to the beach or just get to the beach?
We're trying to take care of the people that currently travel using Collins on foot or bike to, to have a, some sort of a safe alternative to walking in the street.
So you are more concerned about the people that come here for two or three weeks in the summer than you are about the people who own property here in?
I, I think there's probably a good number of residents and I think some of them are sitting right here at this council table that walk on Collins and know what the situation is like on Collins.
Right. Okay. So, but I still, you know, haven't figured out how you're going to get 10 gallons of water into a five-gallon bucket without making one heck of a mess?
Sir.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else? Okay. Anyone else on council?
Just to clarify, we're widening the asphalt. Cars are going to see that. They're going to go faster because you feel more comfortable with the wideness of the asphalt. Do I understand correctly that there's not going to be any barrier between the roadway and the pathway? Maybe a painted line, something like that?
Well, there'll be a significant painted line, but it's no different than the 200 block of Wellington where there's a five-foot pedestrian pathway that's been there for 20 years that people are able to walk in safely.
So you don't worry about the wide, wider path leading to faster speeds, leading to accidents with people?
Well, as I noted earlier, speed is not an issue on Collins. The perception that people are speeding is, is significant because it's very real when a car traveling 25 miles an hour goes past you that close to you. But speed isn't the issue, it's, it's finding an alternative for people that are walking in the street. I think if we determine speed increases, again, our, our measurements, and we have spent literally hundreds of hours measuring speed on Collins, speeds 19 to 21 is about the max. Rarely do you even see someone going 25. So I don't look for a substantial increase in speeding on Collins.
I guess, I guess time will tell. You've said several times that the, you weren't allowed to lower the speed limits below 25. Bay Forest and various other communities and then not far from here have speed limits of like 17 miles an hour. Now, I don't know if those are artificial signs or not.
Those are artificial, that's a great way to put it. Lake Bethany posts their speed limit at 19 miles per hour. It's not enforceable. We have had conversations about just posting speed limits throughout town to 20, but it's not enforceable. We are hoping through some legislative action at the state level that the state will allow municipalities to set their own speed limits to a lower limit if they can make a credible case for it. That doesn't occur today. The state mandates that a formula is used and the formula always allows the speed limit to stay just about what it's set at. And we've tried that on a number of streets throughout town. Right now, we have a, a study that's going to go to the state where we ask the state to lower the speed limit on Delaware 1 to 30 year round and on 26 to 30 also. That's about to go forward and we'll see what happens with that. But the state uses a process that some would say is archaic and not in keeping with what's being done around America, which is a safe system approach to setting speed limits. But I know that the mayor who's very active in the league and, and the vice mayor who's very active in the league and the chairman of the league are working within the Delaware League of Local Government to change that.
We applaud you for doing all that work through a very complicated process and appreciate all that work. That's, that, that is really good and encourage you continue to do that. But also consider, consider putting up a lower speed limit sign because most people don't have all the background that you guys do. And whether you can enforce it or not, if you can slow traffic down, just like speed bumps, it's worth doing for safety.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
You want to say something?
Let him speak. He didn't.
We want to spread the joy.
Hi, Dave Keel, 414 Collins. So we've been keeping an eye on this for a while. Will parking be allowed inside the, the bike and walk lane on the south end of Collins Street?
Yes.
So, but won't that be on private property then if you're taking the ease, eight feet, five to eight feet of the easement, wouldn't then the parking be on private property?
You might be partially parking on private property, but I think our experience is that most of the people that park on Collins in front of their homes are, those are their homes.
Yes. We, we have a lot of issues with renters and others who don't have permits parking on our property. So if there's any way to make, ensure that there are signs for, that they have permit parking only, that would be helpful.
And you do have an issue with other people parking?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. It's all yours.
I lost my train of thought. Oh, I know what I was going to say. Sorry. Could the Bethany West Homeowners Association put up signs in superficial speed limit signs up in Bethany West? Could they vote to do that?
Well, since Turtle Walk has done it and they did it when the development was first built, I, I think it's something maybe you could bring to the council to make a request of. The council voted some time ago just to, to post signs of 20 throughout town, but then hoped we would have some luck in lobbying for the way that we're allowed to set speed limits. So that was passed by the council.
Earlier in the spring, I think.
Earlier in the spring. So the council, I think, is willing to consider something like that. But as I explained, we were looking to, to do it the right way, so.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Hemmend?
Cliff, with, one of the questions came back when I think it's a really, they've all been really good insights, actually. But one talked about the, when you have the pedestrian lane that's, that's clearly marked, if a car were to come down and be in that lane at some point, is that a?
It's a, it's a traffic violation. It's a forcible traffic violation.
Okay. So that would be part of keeping that?
Yes.
It's a solid white line.
Thank you.
Sir.
Okay. Well, I want to thank everyone who took the time to come out today and to present your questions and comments. And please, come back January 13th is going to be the special meeting, one at 3 o'clock for Kent and Wellington and the other at 5 for Collins. And I think you should be receiving in the mail this week.
Should be this week, yes.
This week, a copy of more, further explanation together with a drawing of your own home or your own property and how it would look in front of it. And please, if you have any questions after you receive that, please give the town a call. There's a phone number there to call if you wanted any clarification or you have any questions about it, just to, so that you, you're familiar with it. Okay? Well, thank you very much for coming. If anyone wants to stay, you're welcome to stay. Excuse me, yes.
I'm sorry, Ms. Mayor. One of the questions we had from our, from Bethany West was about if you can't make that meeting on the 13th?
Yes, excuse me, if you can't make the meeting on the 13th, if you can't make the meeting on the 13th, please feel free to send in comments, questions, concerns to admin@townofbethaneebeach.com. Every comment is read and every comment is considered. So please, take the time to do that if you can't make the meeting on the 13th. Or you could do both. Okay. Thank you. And happy holidays.
Let me take maybe a couple-minute break.
Why don't we take a, take a five-minute break so that we can reassemble?
Easy peasy lemon cheesy.
Why don't we take a five-minute break? Does anybody have anything for EMS 4-1-E? 4-1-F?
In 4-1-G, second paragraph, where they talk about the elementary school, Lord Baltimore Elementary, is in nearby Ocean View. Selby Middle School in?
Oh, that "in" should come out, yeah.
In Selbyville.
I think they didn't put that in because it was obvious that it was in Selbyville. But we could, we could.
The word "in" should come out.
Yeah, it should come out.
On 4-1-F, I believe there's 14 stands.
You're right.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're up to 4-1-H, healthcare.
I believe that it says that the Millville or the BB Medical Center is seasonal walk-in emergency center. I don't believe it's seasonal. I believe it's open all year round, all year round.
I think it is, yes. Okay, we'll make that change. Thank you. Okay. 4-1-I on the next page, State Services Center.
What about the Service Center on the Cedar Neck Road? Should that be in there?
Is that under that? What are you talking about, Jerry?
4-1-I, it says State Services Center, and it says operates the Edward G. Double Pond Service Center in Frankfurt, but we have a senior center that's right on Cedar Neck Road.
Oh, that's not the state of Delaware. That's the Cheer Center?
That's Cheer, okay, that's Cheer, okay.
Okay, how about 4-2, water, wastewater, stormwater management? 4-2-B, public water supply.
There's a reference to a well number three?
Yeah, I saw that, too, yeah.
Yeah, I don't, it would appear to me that it probably was one at one time, but maybe it's not operational now. It's listed down here as two, two, three, four, five, and six, but maybe it's, maybe remove the three down there.
Well, I'll check on that. We'll check that, thank you.
This whole paragraph talks about, oh, you're all the way into the depths already. 4-A, and all the descriptions of the hydrology, is the actual aquifer only eight feet below the surface? I thought we had to go down way, a lot further than that to get to that aquifer.
Our aquifers are mentioned here at 175 and 130 feet. So that, in terms of water from, it's not water we're drawing from. And I think when you talk about this, they talk about the areas between Fenwood and Route One in the area of Kent, and also, I think, on Collins, somewhere on Collins, probably that's the area where there's actually an aquifer at eight feet, as I read this. But I don't think we, this was given, or if it was, not this go around, to the water department to take a look at, to vet with the water department.
Might want to ask them?
We'll send that, I'll send this, I'll get in touch with Sean.
I guess the comment I've got is that it talks about this 130 feet thick and so forth, and then 175 feet, is that how far down the well thing is, or how deep it is?
That's where the aquifer is.
So that's where it's?
How deep our wells have to hit the aquifer.
That's where it starts, okay. That's the way I interpreted it.
Public Water Supply, 4-2-B, and that was where we talked about the well. And then on that last sentence there, Cliff, it says, talks about completed and planned systems upgrade, and it says, a plant generator has been replaced, an air radar, and an old radio removed?
Their old data transmitter, how they receive data from their wells.
Okay.
And we'll look for a different word for that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next page. 4-2-C, wastewater, and let's do 2-D while we're at it, stormwater management. Nothing? Okay, 4-2-E, government community services goals and recommendations. Okay, so that goes all the way over to, actually to the end, so. No, not to the end.
Is anybody noticing what a great job I'm doing with the screen or not?
Bruce is, Bruce noticed that.
What's going on last time?
Can you read that quickly, Bruce?
No.
That's the point. That takes us all the way to five.
Well, no, here we go. That was, anybody have any changes in the recommendation section?
They were fully done by the county commissioner.
Yeah, and then by the subcommittee.
Yeah, by the subcommittee, yes.
But you have to get counsel, which is.
I know. The ultimate approval, yes.
Yes. All right, let's go to chapter five. Nothing on chapter four. Chapter five, natural resources and sustainability.
There's a reference to a figure X.
Oh, see, they all have to be all.
There'll have to be.
There's a lot of those.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, and the people who are helping us with that from University of Delaware will be adding all those things in.
Got it, got it.
Yeah, that whole thing, several times it says figure X.
Yeah.
Because they didn't know what I would refer to. And before this is completed, we'll probably have our soil analysis of the entire community.
Oh, good.
Especially if we keep adding extensions, I'm sure we will, so.
That'll be great. Okay, so 5-1, physical characteristics, nothing. 5-2, 5-2-A, water resources, watersheds, and total maximum daily loads. 5-2-B, excellent groundwater recharge potential areas and wellhead protection areas. 5-2-C, wetlands.
Slow down, slow down.
Okay, sorry.
5-2-B, the last paragraph, it says these were developed with a variety of small lot residential dwellings prior to the adoption of the state procedure. I don't understand what that is. Page 44, third paragraph down.
Is it under, what is it?
5-2-B.
Okay.
144, right?
Yeah, I just don't understand what this small lot residential dwelling prior to, what's that all about? What does that mean? Does anybody understand that?
Oh, I think that that's talking about that recharge area in the paragraph above it. And these areas were developed with a variety of small lot residential dwellings prior to the adoption of the state's protective regulations.
So it was covered, made pervious, and if it were done today, then the thought was that it would be impervious, that they would be protecting that area. But that's somebody's supposition, I believe, so, okay.
And I think some of that's addressed now, too, in our regulate, in our ordinance. Is there anything else on that section?
No.
Okay. 5-2-C, wetlands. 5-2-D, flood hazards.
Is this again something where they're?
And please, anybody who's in attendance today, if you have any thoughts or questions or comments, please speak up. All right, four dash one B, water and wastewater. No. Four dash one C, police. We have twelve.
There's a typo in the third paragraph. Second sentence. The first in front of Kalia on the second line.
Oh. Oh, to be, to become.
To become Kalia accredited.
Yeah, what should that be, Cliff? Should be? To become Kalia, yeah, just take out the word first.
No, first should go in front of become, to first become Kalia accredited.
Got it. Thank you. All right, nothing there. Four dash one D, fire and rescue. Nope. Let's just do the whole next page. Does anybody have anything for, on EMS, four dash one E, four dash one F?
In four one G.
Okay.
Second paragraph.
Right.
Where they talk about the elementary school, Lord Baltimore Elementary, is in nearby Ocean View. Selby Middle School in.
Oh, that in should come out, yeah.
In Selbyville.
I think they didn't put that in because it was obvious that it was in Selbyville. But we could, we could.
The word in should come out.
Yeah, it should come out.
On, on four dash one F, I believe there's fourteen stands.
You're right.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're up to four dash one H, healthcare.
I believe that it says that the Millville, or the BB Medical Center is seasonal walk-in emergency center. I don't believe it's seasonal. I believe it's open all year around, all year round.
I think it is, yes. Okay, we'll make that change. Thank you. Okay. Four dash one I on the next page, State Services Center.
What about the service center on the Cedar Neck Road? Should that be in there?
Is that under that? What are you talking about, Jerry?
Uh, four one I, it says State Services Center, and it says operates the Edward G. Double Pile Service Center in Frankfurt, but we have a senior center that's right on Cedar Neck Road.
Oh, that's not the state of Delaware.
Okay.
That's the Cheer, Cheer Center?
That's Cheer, okay, that's Cheer, okay.
Yep.
Okay, how about four dash two, water, wastewater, stormwater management? Four dash two B, public water supply.
There's a reference to a well number three.
Yeah, that, I saw that too, yeah.
Yeah, I don't, it would appear to me that it probably was when at one time, but maybe it's not operational now.
I clipped that down.
It's listed down here as two, two, three, four, five, and six, but maybe it's, they removed the three down there.
Well, I'll check on that. We'll check that, thank you.
This, this whole paragraph talks about, oh, you're, you're all the way to the depths already. Four A, and all the descriptions of the hydrology. Is the actual aquifer only eight feet below the surface? I thought we had to go down way, a lot further than that to get to that aquifer.
Our aquifers are mentioned here at, at a hundred and seventy-five and a hundred and thirty feet. So that, that in terms of water from, it's not water we're drawing from. And I think when you talk about this, they talk about the areas between, with Fenwood and Route One in the area of Kent. And also, I think on, on Collins, somewhere on Collins, probably that's the area where there's actually an aquifer at eight feet, as I read this.
Okay.
But I don't think we, this was given, or if it was, not this, this go around, to the Water Department to take a look at, to vet with the Water Department.
Might want to ask them.
We'll send that, I'll send this, yeah, I'll get in touch with Sean.
I, I guess the comment I've, I've got is it, it talks about this a hundred and thirty feet thick and so forth. And then a hundred and seventy-five feet, is that how far down the well thing is, or how deep it is?
That's where the aquifer is.
So that's where it's.
How deep our wells have to be to hit the aquifer.
Okay. That's the way I interpreted it.
At public water supply, four dash two B, and that was where we talked about the well. And then on that last sentence there, Cliff, it says, talks about completed and planned systems upgrade, and it says, a plant generator has been replaced, an air radar, and an old radio removed?
Their old data transmitter, how they receive data from their wells.
Okay.
And we'll look for a different word for that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next page. Four dash two C, wastewater, and let's do two D while we're at it, stormwater management. Nothing? Okay, four dash two E, government community services goals and recommendations. Okay, so that goes all the way over to, actually to the end, so. No, not to the end.
Is anybody noticing what a great job I'm doing with the screen or not?
Bruce is, Bruce noticed that.
Can you read that quickly, Bruce?
That's the point. That takes us all the way to five.
Well, no, here we go. That was. Yeah, that's, anybody have any changes in the recommendations section?
Yeah, they were fully, you know, done by the, by the commission.
Yeah, and then by the subcommittee.
Yeah, by the subcommittee, yes.
But you have to get counsel for those changes.
I know. I mean, the ultimate approval, yes.
Yes. All right, let's go to chapter five. Nothing on chapter four. Chapter five, natural resources and sustainability.
There's a reference to a figure X.
Oh, see, they're all, those have to be all.
They'll have to be.
There's a, there's a lot of those.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, and the people who are helping us with that from University of Delaware will be adding all those things in.
Got it, got it.
Yeah, that, that whole thing, several times it says figure X.
Yeah.
Because they didn't know, I would refer to it. And before this is completed, we'll probably have our, our soil analysis of the entire community.
Oh, good.
Especially if we keep adding extensions, I'm sure we will, so.
That'll be great. Okay, so. Five dash one, physical characteristics, nothing. Five dash two, five dash two A, water resources, watersheds, and total maximum daily loads. Five dash two B, excellent groundwater recharge potential areas and wellhead protection areas. Five dash two C, wetlands. Five dash two D.
Slow down, slow down.
Okay, sorry.
Five dash two B, the last paragraph, it says these were developed with a variety of small lot residential dwellings prior to the adoption of the state procedure. I don't understand what that is. Page forty-four, third paragraph down.
Is it under, what does it mean?
Five, two, B.
Okay.
Forty-four, right?
Yeah, I just don't understand what this small lot residential dwelling prior to, what's that all about? What does that mean? Does anybody understand that?
Oh, I think that, that's talking about that recharge area in the paragraph above it. And these areas were developed with a variety of small lot residential dwellings prior to the adoption of the state's protective regulations.
So it, it was covered, made, made pervious, and if it were done today, then the thought was that it would be impervious, that they would be protecting that area, but that's somebody's supposition, I believe, so, okay.
And I think some of that's addressed now too in our regulate, on our ordinance. Is there anything else on that section?
No.
Five dash two C, wetlands. Five dash two D, flood hazards.
Is this again something where they're filling in? There's that chart that says zone AE, zone AO.
All of that is, yes, they're filling, they have to fill in the number of dwelling units.
Okay.
They're taking care of that. Thank you. Okay, five dash two E, beach strand. And then the table there, of course, that has to be labeled. Five dash two F, sea level rise. Which brings us, there's no comments on that.
Gets a little scary there on the.
Yeah.
As you move along in time.
Yes. It is.
Yeah, I, I went into.
Want to move to the southern end of town.
All, all, all these. I'll say pictures, or layouts that we show of the town in different conditions. And I went into that website to see if I can actually, I can't, it only gives you one choice. You can't get all, all the different conditions, like, you know, where it's the one-year, ten, whatever the different, the. Yeah, the three feet versus five feet, whatever.
Right.
It, you only get one, and I just, is there a?
If you go to the town's website, and you go to the weather page and pull up the real-time tide data, on that page you can input different numbers that will take you two, three, four, five.
I've done it on the web.
There, okay.
I have done it on the website. I was just trying to clarify it with this, of course, I guess it's already clarified because you got it there. But by going to this particular website that's listed, you can't get but just one of the three that we show. That was my own comment.
I'll look into that. Anyone else? Okay, five dash three, relevant programs, policies, and regulations. Three A, three B, three C.
Under three B, it says additionally, additionally, the town is considering an ordinance that will require all new construction to provide a minimum number of trees. Have we not finally said yes to that? So shouldn't it say ha, has? The town has a tree ordinance?
No, I think that's still being developed, isn't it? Yeah, planning and zoning isn't finished with that one. The one we just did was for permeable sur.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So that's three, three A, three B, and three C. Tree punishment is C. Okay, how about five dash four, sustainability and adaptation?
Back up, the table shows us up to 2018. Did we not get replenished in 2020?
Yes, we had a twenty replenishment.
So then we should need to add that.
Is that data available?
Certainly.
Yeah, we'll add that, thank you. That's a good point.
Would, would it be appropriate to add something in here about the recently approved Back Bay Study? Currently in progress? Well, I mean, it's over the next three years. That's, that's, I mean, I realize that's a regional thing. It's not just a Bethany Beach thing.
That would be back under stormwater?
That's not stormwater though, is it?
Well, this is referring to stormwater and flooding.
Okay, oh, flooding, okay, yeah. Where are you, Cliff, on that?
But if you're referencing it, it's not something that we're going to be actively participating in?
No.
No.
But I mean, there's a lot of other things in here, the Clean Water Act and environmental protection, you know, a lot of things that are referenced. I don't, just a thought.
Okay, no, just, just so we're aware of that.
I mean, it's certainly a, a big thing, and, and maybe that will affect, you know, some of those scary charts, where scary plans that we look at.
Well, the dam will only be two and a half feet tall, so.
Oh, I know.
They'll all be, they'll all still be scary.
Yeah. Just two. I know, but. Just two feet less.
Cliff, does that, do these, um, volume of sand and the years, does this include South Bethany too? Because we were.
I'm not sure, and the numbers don't seem.
I was going to say the numbers are.
Right either, so I'm not sure exactly where this came from when they asked.
Yeah.
Might have been one of the things we asked Denrick for, and they provided us, but the numbers don't certainly seem.
That's exactly where we got them from.
Okay.
From Denrick?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, for just Bethany or South Bethany too, for this project?
No, actually, no, they actually, when they do a replenishment, if it encompasses multiple towns, that, that's, that's the total volume of sand.
Total volume, so that would include South Bethany?
Yes, it can, yeah.
Yeah.
But if includes South Bethany, the numbers then seem awfully light, so.
Yeah.
Mayor, just sort of thinking, again, coming back to this, what this is really about. It's about an aspirational goal and planning and, and Ron's point, I mean, I, it seems like we've been working, you all have been working really hard before to get that study, or lobbying to get it done. Now that we've got it signed off, it seems like that ought to be part of the plan at some point, you know? I mean, that we're gonna be able to maybe get guidance, direction from that that certainly applies to all this.
Well, you, that you hope there's a benefit to the community.
Yeah, but, but the fact that there's all, I mean, this is a pretty monumental, I mean, a significant event that happened last week, right? But it seems like since we're doing this now, it feels like it ought to be included somewhere, that it's part of the.
Except we look at this every year.
Yeah.
And I think it'd be more appropriate, as you will know with government projects, sometimes they don't occur. On, on the time scale they're looking at, because of funding issues. So I would, I would suggest as an alternative, is once this is done, then include it. Not, not, not ahead of time when, if you put it in there and it doesn't get done in this timeframe, since we look at this thing every year.
Well, they have signed it, so it, it will be done.
Right.
Yeah, but, but not necessarily in the timeframe.
You know, I'd like to wait until, this is not going to be done for several months. We're going to get an extension. The U.S. Army Corps of Engineers has not come out with a scope of work yet.
Yes.
And I think to just put in something that we're unsure of what the scope is and how it's going to affect us, I wouldn't feel comfortable doing that at this point.
Me too.
Fair.
Yeah, okay.
Because funding is always the big, the big issue now anymore.
Yeah, because there are some people who think this is going to deal with our nuisance flooding and everything, and the other states have done it with more mega projects, so we don't know the scope yet.
I'm, I mean, I'm fine.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah, yeah.
To me, it just seems like, given the emphasis we put on it, it's a big deal that they signed it, and we're moving ahead with it, that's all.
Right.
But that's fine, if you want to wait.
Yeah, just, you know, it'll be something that we will insert.
Yeah, that's fine.
I think we need more information so that it is accurate. Did you go to say something, Cliff?
No.
Okay. Okay. We're up to five dash four A, one green Bethany initiative. And RCP impervious surface study.
Yeah, down in, next to the last paragraph, it says the town is in the process of drafting an ordinance addressing pervious and impervious.
Yeah, we have to change that.
We have to change that, because it is.
Has adopted.
It is adopted, right?
Yeah, has adopted.
Yeah, thank you. In the process of, has adopted an ordinance addressing pervious and impervious surfaces. And we haven't yet done the alternative best management practices, and it's also in the process of drafting alternative best management practices.
Yes.
Okay, anything else there? Okay, storm emergency relief fund. Five dash four A two, stormwater management mitigation policy. Okay, five dash four A three, loop canal flood mitigation concept.
In that last paragraph, about the thirty percent preliminary design and cost estimate, will that be completed by the end of this year?
The thirty percent design and cost estimate is completed in draft form at this time, so.
We perhaps.
We can update that.
Change that to early into 2023?
I, I think, given the amount of time we'll have with an extension, we'll be doing something entirely different with that paragraph.
We'll flag that. Okay, five dash four A four, resilient redevelopment.
Is there a reason that that section is in bold type, or?
No, I think, I think.
That just needs change.
It can be changed, yeah, that's not, I think it may have been added or something.
It's probably a new.
It was added.
Yeah.
It's a new addition.
It just, it just, that's, they're just to bring to attention from the, for the last time we did it.
Be the same font as.
Yes.
Yeah.
There's, there's a couple of sections in, in that are bold, and they, they don't need to be anymore. That was basically a highlight of the changes that we made.
Yeah, makes sense.
Okay, five dash five, goals and recommendations. And under the, the very last one, it talks as if the tree preservation had, is the tree, did you do a separate ordinance on tree preservation? Did you do a separate ordinance on tree preservation? You didn't. This is the tree ordinance, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay, so then they're still in the process of drafting it. January, yeah, so it may be.
I guess I had a little bit of a comment on that, is that we're trying to increase the tree coverage, but yet most, a lot of the lots that people are building on now, they're going in and taking trees out. So that's going to be an interesting comment.
Well, except, except there is a requirement of, of replanting.
Yeah, but you're, but I'm saying, like, just like we had the example back in Tingle where the guy took out twenty trees, and he's going to only have to put back in five. Putting back in five is not going to get that back, going to raise the coverage.
But our, our code allows someone to take out of the footprint of a, of a structure.
I understand that. It just says, it says we're trying to increase the tree coverage to forty-five percent versus a canopy, which is now forty percent. Increasing it is going to be difficult, knowing that you're taking out a lot of trees to build homes.
That's true.
Well, the, the good thing is, most of this town is built out.
Yeah.
Does anyone else have anything? Okay, so we're good with what we have. I think next month, we're going to be getting six, seven, and eight. Chapters six, seven, and eight, and there, I think altogether, there are pretty ten.
You know, Mayor, being relatively new to this process, and not having ever taken a look at this comprehensive plan before, even knowing it existed, it really is a pretty cool tool to think about where we are and where we're going. Not for a specific, you know, this, this, and that, but, but you read this, you've got a pretty good understanding of what's going on in the town, right? I mean, that's a.
It's also a requirement by the state of Delaware.
I know it is, I know, but it's, yeah, yeah.
It'd be nice if other people would read it, though, and it does have the force of law.
And for those who aren't aware of it, it is on the website. It's under the briefing materials for this workshop, and it will be for, each chapters will be there for every workshop, so if anyone from the public wants to send in comments, please, by all means, do so. Once we finish with this whole thing, there will be the opportunity for public comment on the entire document as well, and that will be at a series of public hearings. But the next three chapters, we have economic development and redevelopment is six, housing is seven, and transportation is eight. And then we afterwards will, you know, go through and, among ourselves, decide on which are the, you know, immediate, which long-term, ongoing.
Yes.
Recommendations.
Mayor, you know, to build on Jerry's point a little bit, the fact that you're probably not going to, a lot of people are going to get excited about reading, I don't know, five hundred, five hundred page, ten sections, fifty pages, or whatever that math works out to, but if you were to do something like a Cliff Notes version of it, you know, staying true to what it says, that might be something that people can sort of put their teeth around a little bit and go, this is sort of a helpful, you know, it would literally be just summarizing a little bit what we have, if there's a, if that would help.
You should immediately task planning with doing that.
Yeah. They could put it out in segments.
Or maybe the, maybe the councilman that suggested it.
Well.
Actually, with a little bit of help, I, I mean, it would, it'd be a fun, once we get this done.
Oh, it would be a lot of fun.
Fun. It's a new councilman, fun.
Oh, my God.
You can tell he hasn't been on Castle Log.
Planning and zoning has been working on this since, for two years, so I'm sure they'll think it's a lot of fun.
And I would tell Councilman Kay.
Yeah, they want a raise.
I would tell Councilman Caleb that instead of numbers in my office, all we use is X's, so.
Mayor, have we applied for and received an extension?
I think we have, I think Terry has taken care of that. We haven't received anything, but I know she's done some work on that.
They're, they're very reasonable at the state level, extremely reasonable, especially during the COVID. You know, throw that on top of that.
And I know Rehoboth's got two years' worth of extensions on theirs, yeah.
And, and certainly working with the University of Delaware, who are linked closely with the state, yeah, we'll help that.
Yeah. Okay, anything else? Anyone else? Well, thank you all for coming, and thanks for your patience, and I think we've accomplished a lot today. And thank you, Jane.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays to everybody.
I think Bruce comes down here just by habit.
The sixteenth, they, they changed it to the sixteenth.
What's that? Yeah.
On the sixteenth.